Yes, ready?
Yeah.
Good evening, everybody. The day is Tuesday, December 1st, first day of December. Six o'clock, we're gonna have a work session. Stand, do the pledges, get the meeting started.
Pledge pledges to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to have a moment of silence to honor our military, firefighters, sheriffs deputies, and group workers as they serve our community here and abroad. Thank you. Mr. Edpers, give a roll call, please.
Trustee McGlaughlin.
Present.
Trustee McGuire.
Present.
Trustee Mann.
Present.
Okay, so first thing on the agenda this evening is old business, and we're gonna review and discuss the 2021 permanent budget. So, what's in your packet? It looks like the first one on the top of the list is the general. We don't know what the 20, we have anywhere to compare this to last year's appropriations?
Yes, it's in the second packet in there.
It does look like he said, that's not a budget, that's the appropriation. Where's the revenue? Budget includes revenue and expenditures. How do you know if expenditures aren't above the revenue?
Do we have the revenue paper?
Do you have that? All the budget meetings?
Aye.
You were given, trustees were given that in all the budget meetings?
Except you can't approve of that package unless you got a revenue. It's not a budget, it's just approved an appropriation.
You've already entered the estimated resources into the record.
I have not entered anything.
You brought it to the meeting, and that means it's becoming part of the record.
No, it's not, it's not a budget until you got the whole package together. So, you shouldn't be calling it a permanent budget if you approve it.
Steve, for the record, do you have access to balances on UAN, revenue balances?
I do, through the software, read only.
Did you move the trash someplace else? Because the trash has been a hell of a drop. One hundred thirty thousand with two hundred and three dollars. Well, we went there wrong. One thousand, tax one twenty, three two two, three oh oh four. Charging trash removal, trash contract.
It appears to be a typo there, you like, right? Let's see, number eight.
Pull it out. With what we all reviewed in a general public workshop. Two hundred and three thousand. Two oh three zero zero zero.
So, did I make that balance, um... Afforded it?
Yes, sir. And the difference from 2020, encumbered, to 2021. In 2020, the amount of trash that was charged was one hundred thirty thousand. And then we got an updated contract with the city, and it goes to two oh three. So, that's the difference. You know, the explanation why it's higher than the one thirty last year. It's all based on...
How did we sign that, and the fees were the same?
Well, the collections, what they require out of collections. They also are going house to house to verify accounts and collecting for people that haven't collected in a long time. So, they did an audit, and so they're getting more revenue from the different folks. So, we have to pay the bill for those additional people that haven't been paying in a long time. I don't know what those numbers are, but I know the audit increased it. And that's why you do an audit every so often, just to make sure that you're not being overcharged or undercharged. And in this case, there were a lot of people not being charged for their trash account. So, we were able to help the city of Dania put that out.
Couple lines down, the contracted services, IT, computer support. I believe that's the Buckeye, we discussed Buckeye several times, the one who does that computer support. And we thought that half, and we had discussions that we do that because we're not gonna have new expenses this year because it costs us extra money to move and all the extra computers we put online and all that good stuff. Cameras and everything else we did at Buckeye. But still a ten thousand dollar figure, at their rate of a hundred twenty-five dollars an hour. I'm only coming up to eighty hours of service for a full year, ten thousand.
That's probably an overestimate. But we gotta protect ourselves to at least have enough money there to pay the bill when we do call on them.
That's one huge, wow.
We didn't have that many, I mean, outside of the installation, you didn't have that many hours last year.
Well, how do we have sixty thousand dollars for the bill at Buckeye? We didn't have any hours.
That was all hardware transfer to servers, tunnels put together for all the separate locations to work together. And it wasn't sixty thousand here, including the telephone bill in that amount. Whoever gave you a sixty thousand figure was wrong. It was stated by the former chief to me, and I said, "You're wrong." And I pointed out to him before he left that it was, he was including the telephone and the Buckeye together, and that wasn't true.
Okay, I've seen the bill with...
Bills were two, Buckeye, Buckeye does telephone. Total Buckeye bills was over sixty thousand dollars, did they do telephone too?
They hooked up all, they have the internet, and they take care of the internet. So, they were part of the telephone installation process. And that's, that's an annual fee, or annual cost, including all services received on regular service. Trustees choose, and the vendors have choice. So, I have no control over those vendors. If you want to make the change like we talked at previous meetings, that's great. That's for a new year project. But I don't choose to use Buckeye, you do.
We go down a couple more lines, Tracy, I have a question for you. So, it's, we're in one two oh three six oh, the three oh one eight contracted services, meeting minutes. You see that line?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, am I reading that right? We have five, we had five thousand appropriated. We have thirty-six hundred and some change left in there, so we only used under thirteen hundred in writing minutes?
Yeah, from September, September to December were the minutes.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, yes, we have eight thousand in there for right now. We spoke about, I don't know if this is the last meeting, but two meetings ago, we spoke about getting these minutes up to date, getting transparent, get all the stuff out online. And I said I was gonna get a hard quote, and I did. So, um, I sat down, it's got plenty of time, and I wrote, made an Excel spreadsheet of all the first meetings we'd already done, paid for that out of my pocket. But, starting January sixteenth, there's a list of every flipping meeting. I'm missing two minutes on two of them, but I looked down the time, looked up the non-time, and each minute, each meeting was. It came up, came up with a total of forty-one point one hours of minutes to the middle of November. Now, I know we could have more than that. We had a two-hour meeting, my last meeting was two hours. I think our meeting I missed last week was over two hours. And we're gonna have more than that, but at forty-one point one hours, I have a hard quote. Here it is. For, uh, did you get a quote for it? For three thousand one hundred and thirty-three dollars. And they can do it in ten days. We've got to be transparent, we've got to get this done. So, anyway, when I'm getting at with that, we discussed that meeting, when I'm getting at with that, though, is the eight thousand dollars, that number can be dropped, probably in half. So, there's a, I mean, we're thirty-one, thirty-three. And we're missing several hours. That's, that's it. That quote is forty-five hours and one minute, what I've heard into it. But, so, at least say three thousand there, Steve, at least about that with three.
And that's good news. Yeah, so... One thing you, one thing you gotta realize too, is you got all the BZA meeting minutes, you got the hearings for the BZA, you got the hearings for the zoning commission, if there are any, including the Roush case that is current. And you don't know what those were. So, we tried to do a budget there that, when I talked to each department manager of what they have in terms of their meetings, you know, I'm here to work with you guys any way we can, but I wanted to make sure we had enough money in that account to cover all meetings that the township has, because we're responsible for all public meetings.
So, um, one meeting a month?
If there's no hearings. They're scheduled for two a month, but they haven't had that much activity. But we don't know what's gonna open up with the Roush case next, next year.
We'll leave it at that, it's...
The average Roush case has taken about three hours, two and a half to three hours with the eternity.
You add, you take twenty-five percent more of that, that's only, um, no, ten hours, well, twelve hours.
The meeting's about two hours for, for that, so you'll get twenty-four hours minimum on, on the BZA and about twelve maybe on the zoning. So, that's thirty-six additional hours at the minimum, without a hearing.
Okay, so, with, for your meeting, contracted meeting minutes, do you intend that to include those minutes too under the general?
Yes.
Since those are general funds?
So, how many meetings and how many hours are you figuring this out?
Say again?
How many meetings, what's the breakdown given to that number?
Well, if you, I, I did the research, and that's what I came up with. You know, if you want, maybe you take the time to look that up yourself and figure it out, but I came up with forty-five hours and one minute through the middle of November.
Okay, when I spoke with Adrian a while back, I asked her how much of her week was dedicated to producing minutes. She was producing two and a half to three days a week to generate the minutes. So, there's twenty hours of meeting. Okay. Still got, Tracy's still gonna have to go through these minutes and check them before we can vote on it.
Yeah, I'm not doing that.
Well, then we can't approve any meetings.
You didn't approve any of them last year, you didn't approve any of them the last time that I went through them.
Well, we don't have anything on the table to approve.
I'm talking about September thirty-seven, the last one.
Anything to be, anything not to be transparent. Get it printed, get them out there, we've got to get this stuff out there.
Minutes have to be attested by the Ohio law, and you can't post. Or they're not official, so, like Tracy mentioned, your November, your September to December are not legal because they weren't attested. And so, you have to be careful with making sure that your minutes are attested. You can't post anything out there as a board of directors under the Ohio law.
For years, for years, we didn't have our meeting minutes attested. And they, they were okay.
What was that?
For years, we didn't have them attested to.
Do you know what years that was?
Yeah, my first study here was two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Well, first of all, with that, you already have the resolution to...
There's ten thousand dollars in the fire department too, by the way, I mean, many minutes. They got ten thousand dollars in there, but...
We already have a resolution to get it prepared in a different way. So, I guess that's something, if you wanted to buy a couple of meetings and try and get a pattern for what this is gonna cost, but I think your projections are coming up short.
I agree with that.
How many meetings did you have them do? One?
I didn't quote the whole flip, how many have I done? I did one. How many did you have done? Zilch.
So, you're going against a resolution?
I'm not going against a resolution. Your resolution is to go word for word, I'm doing that. I'm trying to get us transparent and get this stuff out there so we can do this, and you don't want to do it.
No, it needs to be done.
Then why aren't you for this?
Mr. Rand, did you contact that lady that starts minutes? Did you get that set up?
I have not actually talked to her, I got a message, messaged to her, but I have not spoken with her. Mike, are your minutes word for order now?
Yes.
Word for word. But you have no way of verifying the accuracy?
I verified the first one, if you want to verify, if you want to sit down and verify every one of them, you can. Well, you have no way of verifying, you listen to the audio tape, and you sit there and read the minutes. I did that for the first one. Took quite a bit of time, because I couldn't do it all in one stretch. I do it for a little bit, then I do it, then I do it, then I do it.
Okay, we've got to get some minutes done.
This guy, this company says they'll do it ten days.
He has somebody, uh, when we get in a regular meeting, let's go with who we have.
There's no way that Tracy could get those reviewed, and we get those...
I'm not going to review them either.
Why don't we recruit a team to get them reviewed? We each take them up, and whatever, we gotta work as a team to get this done. Or we can be negative on it, and no, it can't happen for this reason, it can't happen for that reason.
Well, I understand why you want to water down the record.
I'm not watering it down, it's worth it more, I ain't watering down nothing.
Jim, how about if you read them? Since you don't trust nobody else to look at them. Because you didn't even sign any of the minutes that was approved that the lady that, Mr. Mann had. You didn't sign any of those.
That's because you had six or seven meetings in that package, and it was this thing.
You still didn't sign them, whatever excuse there may be.
Up here, up front, I'm not gonna read three hundred pages of material when it's on the table.
And then they delayed, and they delayed it, and you still didn't read them.
That's the same idea we have of getting the meeting...
Well, I voted no on them minutes, so...
Yes, you did. So, what's the point? What's the point of wasting money if you're gonna vote no? And then you're gonna have somebody spend all the time, and you're still gonna vote no, and you're the one...
For some reason...
So, why don't you review them?
For some reason, you and Mike were in a hurry to get those passed, probably times...
It had nothing to do, it had nothing to do with me and Mike. It was me and Mr. Mann that was working these minutes.
You don't get in a hurry for anything.
It was for me, it was me and Mr. Mann working this. Mr. Mann set it up, and he had me doing it. It was nothing to do with Mike. You're just assuming stuff.
I just want to go back to those recordings and trace that out, but I know how I voted. You just said, agreed with that, so...
Yeah, and I just told you, what's the point of me reviewing if you're not gonna sign them? Why don't you review them?
Let's get back to the point, the point of our agenda right now is on the agenda, and I, so...
Can I say one more thing?
Well, maybe the eight thousand is a...
Just say you are...
Is a, is a good number to keep.
Because you were, because up till now, you were...
I'm aware of, of that. Now, um, how the, Mr. Chief, Fire Chief? So, you have some money in your budget, you're willing to help us with these minutes since you're involved in this meeting. So, I think we have enough money, enough money in there to do it, we just need to stay on top of it. Now, with the, um, I know with Zoom packages you guys fought last week, but with the Zoom, there again, with the Zoom, different Zoom packages, they offer this service with that package. They'll be a handful of bucks. So, um, I mean, it's, it's on top of computers. That's why, that's how they can do so cheap.
The point I wanted to make to trustees to help you guys also make a decision, whatever you're gonna do. You have to ask legal counsel before you spend the money to actually do it. Because if you spend the money and you don't get them attested, let your legal counsel tell you in writing if they're legal or not. Otherwise, you may have spent money that is not gonna stand up in court. You have to have your legal review tell you what needs to be done with these minutes, regardless of who does it, how, how it's done, if it saves money, great. But it's the end result, and it becomes a public record. It's got to have A, B, C, and D according to the state law. And I don't want to tell you guys what's right or wrong, although I, I have a pretty good opinion, that's why you hired me. I want the legal counsel to tell you before you make a change or a purchase with any vendor. Because you spend the money, and they're not legal.
Why...
If the steps aren't taken right.
How is not worth meaning?
You mentioned that you guys might review. Well, you're not allowed to attest. So, you, your review means nothing.
Right.
You have to find out from legal counsel what makes minutes accurate and legal.
Hey, why don't we go back to what we had done before, make it easier, and just do a general outline of the minutes of every meeting? We had that passed earlier in the year until I missed a meeting, and then the wire slid it in there that we had, I knew it word for word. We do it the easy, short way, be so much cheaper, so much easier, but...
But, ma'am, ma'am, thank you, ma'am, approach, you got corners on everything, Mike, that doesn't fly.
Spend money, spend all kinds of money, we don't have what you want to do. All the, just spend money without the proper paperwork, time and time and time again.
The money has always been there.
Okay, so, anyway, that's about minutes, minutes, whatever grounds, it's going down the list here. I don't think we have nobody in here but a code enforcement officer. We have one, is that someplace else?
Yes, yes, you'll find that, uh...
There, because there's two line items.
Oh, okay. Let's off this one.
You have...
One thirty-one ninety.
What is this, Tracy?
One thousand one thirty-one ninety. It's on the last page.
Okay.
And remember, that's a fifty-fifty split, so that's only fifty percent for that individual because you have that person's extra, the other fifty percent coming out of room as you're hiring.
Okay.